Good evening, everyone. I want to welcome you all to the August 8th meeting of the Board of Zoning Appeals. My name is Jeff Carson. I'll be serving as Chair of tonight's meeting. Want to make a few introductions before we get started. Karen Jones will be serving as Vice Chair this evening. Byron Toy with Department of Land Use and Urban Planning will be assisting us tonight along with Janet Parker, the Executive Assistant to the Department of Urban of Land Use and Urban Planning. We also have Patrick Waters, who will be joining us with Unified Government Legal Counsel. And we have the following Unified, excuse me, the following Board of Zoning Commissioners present. Dwayne Beth, Commissioner James Connolly, Commissioner James Ernst, Commissioner Karen Jones, again, serving as Vice Chair. Commissioner Jake Miller. Commissioner, do we have Joseph Strauss? We do not, okay. And Commissioner Aaron Ward. With that, I will turn it over to Secretary Parker, who will read the opening statement about how we'll run the meeting this evening.
And Mr. Chairman, if I could, I would like to also introduce Mr. James Malloy. He has served as an intern in our office and he was just recently hired to our open planner position. And he is in the Commission Chamber.
Thank you. Well, welcome, Mr. Malloy.
I need to, I'm trying to move Daniel over to the meeting. I can't, I'll go ahead with the statement if you can see if you can moving.
Okay.
Okay. We would like to welcome those participating by Zoom or in the lobby, or sorry, in the Commission Chamber to the meeting of the Board of Zoning Appeals. Members of the Board of Zoning Appeals are participating remotely by Zoom or in the Commission Chamber. Mr. Jeff Carson is serving as Chairman this evening. Please note the following instructions for the meeting. If you are joining by Zoom video, please make sure you have an appropriate background and plan to stay visible during the meeting. Board members, please use the raise your hand feature when you want to speak. And after Chairman Carson recognizes you, please unmute your microphone and state your name when you begin to speak. If you need to recuse or take a break, use the raise your hand feature. For those attending the meeting this evening, please use the raise your hand feature if you want to speak on an application. If you're in the Commission Chamber, please come to the front of the room when the application that you're interested in is called and staff will let us know that you would like to speak. After the Chairman recognizes you, please state your name and address and make your comments. If you are having issues getting in the Zoom meeting, please email planninginfo@ycoKCK.org and let Secretary Parker know. Proper meeting decorum is expected of all participating in the meeting and anyone who fails to act properly will be removed from the meeting. The city reserves the right to discontinue a meeting if any improper behavior occurs, which prevents the uninterrupted conduct of business. The format for this evening's meeting is as follows. The applicant will make the opening statement explaining the proposal. The applicant will be given 15 minutes to present their case, which includes the applicant, consultants, and other members of the applicant's team. Members of the board will then address any questions they may have to the applicant. Any persons wishing to speak in favor will be recognized and allowed to do so at that time. Then those persons in opposition will be recognized to make their statements and ask questions with each member of the public being given five minutes to express their opinions. Time may not be shared between speakers. A speaker's time may be extended in five-minute intervals by a two-thirds majority vote of the board. The applicant will then answer questions and make a closing statement. The public hearing portion of the meeting will then be closed and the public will only be allowed to address the board if a question is directed to them. The staff will make their recommendation and the board will discuss the application and make their decision with a brief statement of the reason for the motion preceding the making of the motion. Motion to approve shall include the staff stipulations unless otherwise stated in the motion. Mr. Chairman, our first application is BOZA 2022-035, Josh Boyer for property at 217 South 74th Street. At this time, does any member of the board have any contact to disclose regarding this application?
No.
Thank you. Janet, would you also let the record reflect that Commissioner Polly is now online with us and Daniel Kuhn has joined us representing the Unified Government Legal Counsel.
Yes, thank you very much.
Okay, Mr. Boyer, are you in the audience? Josh Boyer? Mr. Malloy, is Mr. Boyer in the Commission Chambers?
Sorry about that. He's in the Commission Chamber.
All right, thank you. Mr. Boyer, would you go ahead and step to the mic, please? Give us your name and address and tell us about your project.
Yeah, my name is Josh Boyer. I live at 217 South 74th Street. I'm just looking to build a garage, a shop that exceeds the 1,000 square feet limit. I've got a two-acre property, so I don't feel like the 1,000 square foot, well, the over 1,000 square foot is really going to create a hindrance on my property or be overwhelming on the property itself. So it's just a large shop, hobby room, work on cars for myself and do woodworking projects, things like that. Nothing, nothing commercial. Just a place for me to hang out.
And do you have any existing structures on that property?
There is a, there's a chicken coop in the back there and there's a carport which has been brought up in, in the report. Those will be removed as I build this new building.
Okay, so you're going to remove those two and then replace with one, correct?
Correct.
Okay, great. Thank you. Any questions from the Commission? Seeing none. Anyone in the audience want to speak in favor of or in opposition to this request? Please raise your hand online or come to the microphone. Okay, I'm seeing none online. Mr. Malloy, anyone in the audience want to speak?
There's nobody in the audience that wants to speak, sir.
All right, thank you. Okay, I'll close the public portion of the meeting. We'll go to Mr. Toy and get staff comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Staff recommends approval, subsequent stipulations outlined in the staff report.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Toy? Okay, seeing none, I'll stand for a motion. Commissioner Miller?
Move to approve BOZA 2022-35, subject to staff stipulations and comments.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Miller for approval. Is that a second, Commissioner Jones?
Yes, it is.
Thank you. It's been moved to second for approval. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Jones?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Polly?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Beth?
Aye.
Connolly?
Aye.
Ernst?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to recommend approve, or I'm sorry, to approve this appeal subject to the conditions in the staff report passes seven in favor and none opposed.
Thank you.
Our next application is BOZA 2022-037, Wiley Denton for property at 2730 South 69th Street. Does any member of the board have any contact to disclose with regard to this case?
No.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Denton, are you in the audience in the chambers or are you online? If you please come to the microphone or raise your hand online, please. I'm not seeing anyone online. Mr. Malloy, do we have anyone in the audience representing Mr. Denton?
No, sir, we do not.
Wiley Denton, are you in the audience? Please raise your hand or come to the microphone. Okay, not seeing or hearing anyone. I'm going to go ahead and go to staff. Byron, do you want to go ahead and present on this one?
Yeah, that's not a problem. Thanks, Mr. Chairman. So yeah, this is related to fix a non-conforming issue that the lot is three times, the depth as it is wide. It's located kind of in the Turner areas, considering aerial photographs. It's a very narrow front inch along the street, very deep in the rear. Excuse me, so again, fix non-conforming situation. Staff recommends approval.
And thank you. Are there any questions for, I'm sorry, anyone in the audience? Come tonight to speak in favor of or in opposition to this request, either online or in Commission Chambers? Raise your hand or please come to the microphone.
We do have one.
We do have one person in the Commission Chamber that would like to speak.
Okay, I do have a question from Commissioner Connolly first. Commissioner Connolly?
I can barely hear Byron. It's kind of.
We will, yes, Byron, we are having trouble with your microphone.
It's because dogs love me.
Okay. Let's go to the audience member, Mr. Malloy. Please come to the microphone, give us your name and address.
I am Helen Hopkinson. I live at 6453 Cernich Road. I also own a home at 419 South 81st Street. I'm here in support of this variance. Urban agriculture improves neighborhoods from within that neighborhood. It improves safety because people are outside watching. We can grow a lot of food and vacant lots are a blight and when someone's there using that land, it improves the health and well-being of community members, getting them outside, moving around. Gardens have the ability farming, has the ability to sequester carbon instead of just having vacant lots and brown dirt. And farming brings pollinators, grows food, builds community, and creates better health outcomes. So I'm here in support of this variance. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Mr. Malloy, we good at Commission Chambers?
Yeah, no one else in the Commission Chamber, Chairman.
Thank you. We'll go ahead and close the public portion of the meeting. Mr. Toy, did you want to make any final comments on this case?
Yes, I would actually. Thank you. So the applicant will be coming back for a change of zone to rezone it from R1 to AG Agricultural District. That will allow him to have livestock or any other agricultural use he desires on the property. But again, that will be heard before September 12th, 2022. The staff recommends approval.
All right, thank you. Any questions for staff? Seeing, I'm sorry, Commissioner Miller, is that a question or a motion?
I was going to make a motion.
Go ahead, please.
Move to approve BOZA 2237, subject to staff stipulations and comments.
Thank you. Motion's been made for approval by Commissioner Miller. Is there a second? Commissioner Jones?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion for approval? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Jones?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Polly?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Beth?
Aye.
Connolly?
Aye.
Ernst?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to approve this appeal, subject to the conditions in the staff report, passes seven in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. This will conclude the agenda for the Board of Zoning Appeals. We will be in recess for about 15 minutes, then we will convene the City Planning Commission. So we will see you all in about 15 minutes. Thank you. Janet, are we ready to go?
I do have 6:30. I'm looking to see everybody is, it looks like everyone's back. Yes, sir. I'm ready to go.
Great, thank you. Good evening, everyone. I want to welcome you all to the August 8th meeting of the City Planning Commission. My name is Jeff Carson. I'll be serving as Chair of tonight's meeting. Along with me, we have Karen Jones. She will be serving as Vice Chair. We have the following members present tonight in terms of Commissioners. Commissioner Dwayne Beth is in the lobby. Commissioner James Connolly is via Zoom along with Commissioner Ernst, Commissioner Jake Miller, Commissioner Susanna Polly, Commissioner Joseph Strauss. We have Commissioner Aaron Ward also in the lobby. We're joined by Daniel Kuhn, Unified Government Legal Counsel, Byron Toy with Unified Government Planning Staff, Janet Parker, the Executive Assistant to the Department of Land Use and Urban Planning. And Mr. Malloy is also in the lobby helping us out this evening also from the planning staff. So with that, I will turn the meeting over to Secretary Parker, who will read the opening statement and tell everyone how we'll run the meeting tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We would like to welcome those participating to the meeting of the City Planning Commission. The members are participating remotely by Zoom webinar or in person in the Commission Chamber. Mr. Jeff Carson is serving as Chairman this evening. Please note the following instructions for this meeting. If you are joining by Zoom video, please make sure you have an appropriate background and plan to stay visible during the meeting. If you are joining by Zoom video, please make sure you have an appropriate background and plan to stay visible during the meeting. Planning Commission members, please use the raise your hand feature to speak. After Chairman Carson recognizes you, unmute your microphone and please state your name when you begin to speak. For those in attendance via Zoom or telephone, use the raise your hand feature when you want to speak on an issue. The chairman will recognize you when it is your time to speak. Unmute your microphone and state your name and address before giving your comments. If you are attending in person, please come to the microphone at the front of the room when the application is called. And Planner Toy will inform the chairman of how many people wish to speak and how many persons want to raise their hand either in favor or opposition. Proper meeting decorum is expected of all participating in the meeting. And anyone who fails to act properly will be removed from the meeting. The city reserves the right to discontinue a meeting if any improper behavior occurs, which prevents the uninterrupted conduct of business. The Planning Commission is a voluntary body of citizens, which we will review each zoning proposal. For all change of zones, special use permits, vacations, and preliminary land reviews on tonight's agenda, the Planning Commission makes recommendations to the Unified Government Board of Commissioners, who will then make the final decisions on Thursday, August twenty five, twenty twenty two. For final plans and final plan reviews heard tonight, the Planning Commission's decision is final, and there will not be another hearing. The format for this evening's meeting is as follows. The applicant will make the opening statement explaining the proposal. Please note that the applicant will be given fifteen minutes to present their case. The fifteen minutes includes the applicant, consultants, and other members of the applicant's team. Members of the Planning Commission will then address any questions they may have to the applicant. Any persons wishing to speak in favor will be called upon and allowed to do so at that time. Then those persons in opposition will be called upon and allowed to make their statements and ask questions. Please note that each member of the public who wishes to speak will be given five minutes to express their opinions. Time may not be shared between speakers. A speaker may request to extend their time, and the Planning Commission may, by two-thirds majority vote, extend any speaker's time in five-minute increments. The applicant will then answer questions and make a closing statement. The public hearing portion of the meeting will then be closed, and the public will only be allowed to address the commission if a question is directed to them. The Planning Commission will discuss the application and make their recommendation. If persons in opposition want to formally protest a change of zone or special use permit, a means is available by a legal protest petition, which can be obtained along with the necessary instructions by me emailing the Planning and Urban Design Department at planninginfo@yco-kck.org tomorrow morning. Any application receiving a unanimous vote of recommendation by the Planning Commission will appear on the consent agenda of the Unified Government Board of Commissioners. Unless there is a request to remove an item from the consent agenda by the applicant, a member of the Unified Government Commission, or other interested parties, the Planning Commission's recommendation will be adopted. The consent agenda is heard at the beginning of the meeting at seven P M. The Planning Commission will also have a consent agenda as part of their meeting this evening. The consent agenda is the first part of the agenda, and items on the consent agenda are final plans, final plans, or special use permit renewals that have received a staff recommendation to approve. Unless there is a request to remove an item from the consent agenda by the applicant, a member of the staff, a member of the Planning Commission, or other interested parties, the staff recommendation on all of the items on the consent agenda will be adopted by the Planning Commission at one time. I will read a list of agenda items on the consent agenda, and when I have completed the list, the chairman will ask if there are any requests to remove items. This is your time to use the raise your hand feature. Be recognized and request that an item be removed from the consent agenda if you do not agree with the staff's recommendation. If you're in the commission chamber, please come to the microphone, and when you're recognized, you can request that an item be removed from the consent agenda. The Planning Commission is required to disclose contacts about any item on the Planning Commission agenda. Before each item, I will ask if any contacts have been made, and members of the commission will be asked to disclose those contacts. Please note that your opinions will be forwarded to the governing body for their consideration in making a final decision. In addition, those who receive notices for this hearing will again receive them for the hearing on Thursday, August twenty five, twenty twenty two, at seven P M. I will now read the items on the consent agenda. Consideration of the July eleven, twenty twenty two, Planning Commission Minutes. Special Use Permit Application, S P twenty twenty two dash zero six one. Tom Gifford with G and G Holdings LLC. Renewal of a special use permit, S P twenty nineteen one eleven, for the temporary use of land to stockpile and process concrete materials at seventy-two forty-one Cow Drive. Special Use Permit Application, S P twenty twenty two dash zero seven five. Kristen Reiman and Kate Lynch. Renewal of a home occupation special use permit, S P twenty twenty dash zero three eight, for a home occupied short-term rental at twenty-eight twenty-four North Ninety-Ninth Terrace. Plaid twenty twenty two dash zero two zero, McLaughlin Edition. Final plan to construct a single-family residence at thirty fifteen and thirty twenty North Baltimore Avenue. The items I have just read are on the consent agenda. At this time, does any member of the commission wish to disclose any contact on any of these items?
No.
Thank you. Is there anyone on the, oh, go ahead.
Please include the following items as part of the record for all of the items on the consent agenda. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations. The official zoning map for the area in question, the city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question. The staff report and attachments dated August eighth, twenty twenty two. The application of their documents, plans, pictures, and maps submitted by the applicant in furtherance of the case and contained in the official file. The publications in the echo for the special use permits and the notices to property owners. The commission will vote to approve in one vote these items unless someone requests that an item be removed from the consent agenda.
Thank you. Is there anyone on, yes, Commissioner Ward, go ahead. Is there anyone on the commission that wants to have anything removed from the consent agenda, Commissioner Ward?
Uh, yeah, I'd like to have a S P twenty twenty two dash zero six one removed.
Can I thank Commissioner, or I'm sorry, Mr. Toy is going to have some comments about why that was referred back. Uh, so that may take care of the questions you might have outstanding. Uh, anyone else on the commission want anything removed from the consent agenda? Anyone in the audience would like to have anything removed, the consent agenda for special consideration, please raise your hand or come to the microphone. Okay, saying none, we will remove S P twenty twenty two dash sixty-one from the consent agenda, and I'll now entertain a motion to accept the remaining items. Commissioner Jones.
Motion to approve the remaining items on the consent agenda.
Thank you. Commissioner Polly, is that a second?
Yes.
Thank you very much. It's been moved to second to approve the remaining items on the consent agenda. Roll call, please.
Jones.
I.
Biller.
I.
Polly.
I.
Ward.
I.
Beth.
I.
Conley.
I.
Ernst.
I.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to approve the remaining items on the consent agenda, subject to the conditions in the staff report passes seven in favor and none opposed.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, that now takes us to the one item that was removed from the consent agenda. Special Use Permit Application, S P twenty twenty two dash zero six one. Tom Gifford with G and G Holdings LLC. Renewal of a special use permit for the temporary use of land to stockpile and process concrete material at seventy-two forty-one Cow Drive.
Thank you. Mr. Gifford, are you in the audience or anyone representing Mr. Gifford? Please come to the microphone or raise your hand. There we go. Mr. Gifford, I've got you queued up, ready to speak. If you would, please go ahead and give us your name and address and tell us about this project.
Yes, Tom Gifford.
G and G. G for G, yeah, you got it spelled wrong on there. It's G I E F R. Anyway, yeah, we're at seventy-two forty-one Cow Drive.
I think we were pretty close to getting approval for this special use permit, but the Planning Commission wants railroad warning or railroad crossing signs put up uh, at the crossing. We currently have a, and have had for, I don't know, almost six months of, of warning signs, uh, warning drivers when they leave our property to look both ways at the railroad tracks. It's on our property. I haven't, it's kind of, uh, I haven't really heard of any city requesting a private entity to install a railroad warning sign on public right-of-way. It's what I was looking for a little direction from Public Works Department. I haven't got any yet, but we're willing to do whatever we need to, to suffice the plan of mission, but uh, I don't think, uh, that's us specifying our own sign on a public road is not, uh, doesn't seem right, but.
Anything else?
No, I, and I'd like to have a contact with Public Works. Do you got, would you guys know who that would be?
Well, we'll make sure the staff get you the required information after the meeting.
Yeah.
Okay, any questions for the applicant? Commissioner Ward?
Yes, I do. Um, so I was, some questions about, um, some, uh, some fatality accidents that happened across, across that railroad tracks.
Uh huh.
Do you have any information about those accidents?
Yeah, they were both Geiger ready-makes drivers and not sure uh, if they were what the issue is with their ready-makes guys, but we haven't, other than that, we haven't had any other, they're actually not using the site anymore, by the way, but uh, we have met after that last fatality, there was a meeting on site with the railroad safety people. And there were some talk about signs, adding signs then, and they basically shot that down. So they might have to be involved in, in something as far as signs, if we're gonna do that. Like I said, we're willing to do what, what we need to, but, uh, basically just unsafe driving is, you know, what it is when they're not looking at train, not looking for trains, so.
No, understandable. I just, um, was there any discussion about actually having the, the, uh, the gates that come down like there are at many railroad crossings?
So there, when we started using that property on that road, uh, I was contacted by the U P safety manager in Denver, and they were not, I asked her if they would do that, and they were not interested in doing that. I think it's, uh, something the railroad has to approve, but obviously, uh, at the time, they said no.
So at this, so at this time, you, you don't know who would be responsible for installing equipment like that? Is that you, or is it U P, or we just don't know at this point?
There's two choice. You get, if you stay out of there, there right of way, you're probably all right, but it's a city or a county, city-owned road. So for us to come up with our own sign design and submit it to the public work, usually Public Works has standard specifications they go by, which I'm sure all you people know, but it'd be better for them to tell us what they want to be putting there right away instead of me hiring an engineer and submitting some to them, but.
Okay. Okay, and the, the second question I had was, um, I believe some neighbors had some complaints about dust um, and how the, uh, the dust, the dust is a serious issue for them. I just want to know, have you heard that before, and if you have, what's been done?
We did when we were running, getting the first, uh, special use permit. There was, we had addressed that, and we wa, anytime we, it gets dusty down there, we rerun a water truck over it, and I, there was no complaints that I know of uh, here in the last two years after we started doing that. So I think it's been mitigated, so.
Have you had any contact with anybody across this, across the, uh, across the road from you that, um, have they come to you at all, or is that just nothing the last two years period?
No, we have not.
Okay. Any other questions?
Commissioner Beth, I have a question.
Go ahead, please.
Is, is, uh, study been done, or can he tell us, uh, approximately how much traffic does use that crossing? You know, in a day's period, or?
Well, there's just. I mean, we could come up with that pretty easily. There's two business, there's my business that trucks run in and out of, I'd say anywhere from twenty to thirty a day, maybe. And then, uh, Depp and Ball's got that place next to us that runs in and out there quite a bit. Uh, but it would be easy to come up with a traffic count for sure, so.
So you have twenty or thirty a day, uh, in addition with Depp and Bob running?
Yeah, and I couldn't tell you how many they got running in and out there. It could be pretty close to the same, it could be, I don't, I'm not sure without spend some time down there, but.
Okay. Anything else? Anyone in the audience want to speak in favor of or in opposition to this case? Please raise your hand or come to the microphone. He's saying that we'll close the public portion of the meeting. We'll go to Mr. Toy and get staff comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So we're as, as Commissioner Ward stated, this petition was referred back by the board commissioners to the planning commissioner will get safety. So staff contacted the applicant, uh, to see what could be done. So we suggested that I reached out to, actually, I personally reached out to Public Works. And because it's a private crossing and not a public crossing, like you see on South Eighty-Eighth Street, for example, um, he proposed, Troy Shaw, the county engineer proposed that the applicant's consultant, the engineer come up with signage and submit it to Public Works. They would then review it and issue their approval based on what they submitted, and then they could go ahead and construct it on their property. Um, also related to, related to dust mitigation permission award. It is on this, it is in the applicant, in the staff report, and comment number eight. That specifically talks about, uh, daily, actually daily watering um, to mitigate dust, and that being an issue, I suggest the applicant adhere to that, because if it doesn't, then this application can be brought back for revocation with that staff records approved for two years to monitor safety across that crossing.
Thank you. Any questions for staff?
Yeah, one, one question, I'm sorry.
Commissioner Ward.
Um, and you might have to check this, I don't know, but what warrants having a certain type of crossing at a railroad crossing, do you know? I mean, for safety purposes, I mean, two fatalities within a five-year period would be, I mean, that's, that's nothing to, I mean, I know he probably wasn't trying to do that, but he said, he said, other than those two, we've had nothing. Well, that's two deaths is too, 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 too many probably, and I know it's probably driver and attention. I'm not saying that, but um, what warrants more be done there to, to make people safe going across there and make them pay attention?
I honestly do not know what measures can be put in from a for, like, the U G standpoint, um, since it is a railroad right-of-way. Um, I can say for anything that is on the applicant's property, whether it's signage that is, you know, like we have Hawker lights when you have a, a pedestrian crossing across a parking lot or intersection. You know, internal to the property facing north or facing south, but going north across that intersection for you hit, right before you hit the stop sign, have that be a spot they can internally saying flashing light, look both ways type of thing. But as far as something that's in the right-of-way, which is, in that case, the Pacific right-of-way, that's to the applicant's point, that is dealing with the Union Pacific Railroad.
Okay, and so, and, and to your knowledge, the Union Pacific Railroad has not contacted you guys about?
No, they have not contacted staff, no.
About the issues that occurred there or anything?
No.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for staff? Commissioner Connolly?
Yeah, Byron, you don't think it's something that?
Yeah, Byron, you don't think it's something that Pacific Railroad should have to put up because it's their railroad?
I mean, we can ask them to put something up, excuse me, but with it being a federal entity. You know, maybe Patrick, you can maybe could add something about getting a federal entity to do something in the right of way.
Yeah, Patrick Waters, Deputy Chief Counsel. We really have no control. Um, we can certainly request it, um, but we, we really have no leverage that would require them. Um, I think, you know, they, they have their own internal process, I assume, in terms of determining which crossings get those. Um, and, uh, but, but it's, it's not something, something that we, we could require.
All right, thanks.
Any other questions?
One more question, Mr. Ward. I'm sorry. Is this, does something like this, uh, with this warrant a traffic study?
I mean, typically, typically the use like this where you're having grading operations typically doesn't. Cause it's not something that will continually be there indefinitely. Um. You know, it's something you see fit. Then you have to, you have the ability to ask for that, but typically with grading operations or dirt filter removal. Um, we're typically seeing traffic studies.
Okay, and. And this, and so right now we just know of, of the two fatalities as there have been any more accidents at that location besides the two fatalities.
Well, what staff could find would be the one fatality and the two, in total two accidents.
Okay.
Other questions for staff? Seeing none, I'll stand for a motion.
Commissioner Ward?
Commissioner Ward, go ahead.
I move, we hold this over for sixty days to have a traffic study completed for this intersection for safety purposes.
Motion's been made for a sixty day holdover. Is there a second?
Commissioner Beth, I'll second it.
Moved to seconded for a sixty day holdover to perform a traffic study. Is there any discussion? Saying that, roll call.
Jones?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Polly?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Beth?
Aye.
Conley?
Aye.
Ernst?
Nay.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to hold over this application for sixty days for a traffic study. To be completed passes six in favor and one opposed.
All right, thank you.
And the date of that meeting will be October the tenth.
All right, this, this case will be heard again, once again on October tenth.
Mr. Chairman, that concludes the consent agenda. Um, the one special use permit that was recommended for approval will be heard by the board of commissioners. On August twenty-fifth at seven P M.
Thank you.
We will now move on to the non-consent agenda. And our first item is change of zone application C O Z twenty twenty-two dash zero two-two. Andrea Wishhoff with Atlas Land Consulting. Changes on from our one single family district to our two two family district to construct duplex. At forty-seven forty-four George Avenue. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations. The official zoning map for the area in question. The city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question. The staff report and attachments dated August eighth, twenty twenty-two. The application and other documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant. In furtherance of the case and contained in the official file. The notice in the wind on echo and the notices to property owners. At this time, does any member of the commission have any contact to disclose with regard to this case?
No.
Oh.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Swishup. Are you in the audience or there we go? Mr. Thompson, are you here to speak on this case?
Uh, yes, I am. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, please go ahead. Give us your name and address, please.
Um, Austin Thompson, Atlas Lane Consulting, twenty-three hundred Hutton Road, Suite one oh eight, Kansas City, Kansas, six-six-one-nine. Um, and just like, uh, Ms. Parker had said, we are just looking to try to change this, um, from an R one district to R two. Our client is looking to build a duplex on this property. Um, it's pretty cut and dry. Um, but yeah, that's pretty much it.
Questions for the applicant? Seeing none, anyone in the audience want to speak in favor of or in opposition to this request? Please raise your hand or come to the microphone. Seeing none, we'll close the public portion of the meeting. We'll go to, uh. Mr. Toy to get staff comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Staff recommends approval, subject stipulations outlined in the staff report.
Thank you. Questions for staff? Seeing none, I'll stand for a motion. Commissioner Jones?
Motion to approve subject stipulations and comments.
Thank you. Motion to approve made by Commissioner Jones. Is that a second Commissioner, or excuse me, Polly?
It is.
Thank you. Motion, uh, made and seconded for approval. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Jones? Aye. Miller?
Aye.
Polly?
Aye.
Ward? Beth?
Aye.
Conley?
Aye.
Ernst?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to recommend approval of change of zone twenty twenty-two dash zero two-two. Subject to the conditions in the staff report passes seven in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. This will be heard once again on August twenty-fifth at seven P M before the board of county commissioners.
Mr. Chairman, excuse me, I have five applications that we're gonna hear together. And then we will vote on them separately. And they are all located at twenty-six forty Woodin Lane. Master plan amendment, M P L twenty twenty-two dash zero one four. Curtis Peterson with Paulson L A P C. Master plan amendment from low density residential, citywide master plan. To rural density residential, citywide master plan. Change of zone application, C O Z twenty twenty-two dash zero two-three. Curtis Peterson with Paulson L A P C. Change of zone from R P five planned apartment district to A G agriculture district. To construct endless outdoors nature experience. Special use permit application, S P twenty twenty-two dash zero seven three. Special use permit to develop and operate a youth outdoor nature experience facility. With trails, camping and shelters. Flat twenty twenty-two dash zero two-one, endless outdoors, preliminary and final flat for one lot. Plan review application, P R twenty twenty-two dash zero two-four. Preliminary and final plan review for endless outdoor nature experience. Mr. Chairman, please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations. The official zoning map for the area in question. The city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question. The staff report and attachments dated August eighth, twenty twenty-two. The application and other documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant. In furtherance of the case and contained in the official file. The notice in the wind on echo and the notices to property owners. Does any member of the commission have any contact to disclose with regard to this case?
No.
Thank you.
Mr. Peterson, I've got you queued up to speak. Go ahead, please. Give us your name and address and tell us about this project.
Hi, Chairman Kurt Peterson, nine hundred forty-eighth place, Kansas City, Missouri. Here on behalf of Endless Outdoors, which is a five oh one C three nonprofit. With me by Zoom is Nick Christensen, who is the founder and C E O of this five oh one C three. He's a very successful businessman that has taken his skill set and gifts and directed it toward his passion for. Getting children, including my five little children, out from behind their screens and indoors and out. To the wonderful, uh, God made outdoors. Also, we have available, if needed, our civil engineer, Andrew Talkin from Continental and our architect from six twenty-one Architecture, which is Dan Brown. As you heard very briefly, as Ms. Janet read out loud, this is all together, the master plan amendment, change of zone, special use permit. Preliminary and final plat, and the final plan rolled into one. The specific site to be considered here tonight and Ms. Parker, do I, am I able to share screen here? Let's see here.
Let me move you over to panelists and then, uh, I can let you share your screen.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Peterson, you're good now.
Mr. Peterson, we cannot hear you. I'm not sure if you are talking or not. I can see you moving the cursor around, but I cannot, I can no longer hear you.
How about that, Mr. Chairman?
There we go.
We're good?
Yep, I can hear you now.
Thank you.
And we can see your presentation.
Thank you. So on the screen in front of you, you'll see in the site that is at issue today. Has a yellow boundary. It's approximately twenty-six acres located very generally. Uh, east of six thirty-five and north of I thirty-five. The proposed use for this twenty-six acre site will be a base camp as Endless Outdoors calls it.
Uh, Mr. Peterson?
Now, we do, we're now looking at your outlook calendar now, Mr. Peterson.
Was it interesting or there you go? This is better, right?
There we go.
Thank you. So where I was at is the use of this, uh, twenty-six acre site for a base camp. Would it consist of, again, with the overall goal, as I mentioned, of the nonprofit of getting kids outdoors to really learn about nature? And just spend time there and what that feels like and how that, you know, can change their perspective and development. So during the week, this is typically approximately a two hour session for members of Endless Outdoors. That come, uh, in the afternoon, approximately four to six P M typically. And then on the weekends, there's other sessions, given that kids aren't in school, that can go different times of the day. And in terms of the improvements for this site. So that kids can engage with nature and learn from instructors. You can see on the screen here, the same site we just were looking at. That's wooden lane there on the south side. You can see, uh, a parking lot here with fifty-six spaces. For people to come and park. Most of the time, this will be drop offs of parents of children, but for anybody that wanted to stay and certainly for the. The counselors and instructors, this would be the place to come right in off wooden lane and that's the sole access point for vehicles. And then you can see the other improvements. You can see the trails outlined here. There's some existing trails there today that will be improved and some new trails that will be put in. Also, you can see, uh, some different shapes here. The only, uh, improvements here. That show up in terms of vertical structures, because the whole point here is to have as very. Uh, minimal touch on the nature here as possible, but there'll be a welcome center and a bathroom. Which are these two buildings here, just about approximately thirty-two hundred square foot in total. And then back in here, you can see a main gathering point, which we've called the pavilion. Honestly, I don't know if that's an intuitive word. It's what. We're using, but it's actually, as you can see over here, a very, very durable structure that will be put up. Um, we're still playing around with that. It'll be tethered to the tree, to trees in an environmentally safe way. Or what, whether it will be have more posts, if you will, but that's the largest of the structures, kind of the main one. And then the other pavilions that will just be smaller, but the same methodology will be used are these circles around here. Also, there'll be two dried attention basins on either side of the parking lot that the cursor is showing on the screen here. And. Two other items to mention and to just be ready for any questions you might have. One is that there was a neighborhood meeting that we held back on July twenty-first, which was attended by about twenty folks from the neighborhood. And it was very positive. Um, I, I think the biggest takeaway was that the neighbors were happy to see that. This large piece of land will stay almost entirely in its natural state, other than what I just identified, which I think people really enjoyed. And then also, we just wanted to say that in working with staff, we're, we're at a point where we can agree with all twenty-seven stipulations offered by staff. And this is an exciting project for us. It's out of the box. And again, something I know that my family, my children really, uh. Look forward to being a part of and we'd love to answer your questions.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Any questions for members of the commission? Please raise your hand. Not seeing at this point, so we'll go to the public. Anyone in the audience want to speak in favor of or in opposition to this request? Raise your hand or come to the microphone.
Chairman, we have one person in the. In.
I see some hands up. I need you to come to the microphone if you'd like to speak, please. Go ahead, please. Give us, give us your name and address.
My name is Cecilia Robb. My address is twenty-eight twenty-four Glen Rose Lane. In Kansas City, Kansas, just that street branching off from Wood End Lane. I didn't go to the neighborhood meeting because I didn't know about it. But I've come to the commission many times to protest apartment buildings being proposed. And I'm, I'm coming to say I'm in favor of this because, um, we have often wanted. Um, this property to be used for nature trails, which is what's, you know, coming up here. And my property is just on the east end of the, um, Glen Rose Lane. Uh, we used to own eleven acres there. And, um, I live in a geodesic dome. And I think that some of the traffic might increase. But I just wanted to say that I think, um, since I'm also a teacher, I'm really in favor of something, helping the children. Learn about nature because I grew up in the neighborhood and even though I moved away and came back. I've been in that property as a child in the early sixties and, um, the trails were there. It was, it took forever to walk through there, but, um, even as an adult, I've gone in there and looked around. And we do need to have, um, we have some concerns in our, um, on our street. Some people speed down that street and I'm hoping that some of the, um, people that are working in this group. Will, um, help us, help us improve the neighborhood in that area and also, um, there's a lot of problems with, um. People, uh, shooting guns on the weekends and it happens most of the time at night, but I've heard, um, some other things during the day. So I'm really hoping for security to be improved and, um, even surveillance cameras. So, um, I'm encouraging you to do your homework, but I know you've, uh, done a very good job and. And also I'm an artist, so I appreciate anything that has to do with creativity and I look forward to seeing the pavilions. Fit in with the environment. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. I'm gonna go to Julia Henley online. Ms. Henley, go ahead and give us your name and address, please.
Uh, yeah, I'm at twenty-six twenty-five Hagman Street. And my concern was just to make sure that they didn't open up our street, which is a dead end. Um, we don't want the traffic flow through. Um, I was concerned about the facilities that will be used, but he did say there was gonna be a bathroom. Um. Uh, question is no overnight stays. Is that correct?
We'll get you some answers to those questions. So your question is whether or not there will be any overnight stays permitted? And whether or not there's any plans to open up, I'm sorry, what was the name of your street Hagman?
Correct.
Okay, and again, would you state your name for the record? You did not state your name.
Oh, Julia Henley.
Okay, were those your only questions, ma'am?
Um, yes.
All right, we'll try to get you some answers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna go back to the audience, please. Go ahead and step up to the microphone, sir, and give us your name and address, please.
My name is George Higgins. My address is twenty-five forty Espenlov Lane. My property abuts the north property of, or the north property line of, of, of the said site. And I did attend the neighborhood meeting and I was very encouraged about what they want to do with this property. Uh, I've lived there fifty-three years and there's always something going on up there. Whether it's a drug deal or dirt bikes or junk being dumped. And these people are committed to cleaning it up and taking care of it. And they did mention that they're working with a security company to create security for the property. So I'm really encouraged to see something happening on this piece of property, something positive.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else want to speak? Not seeing anyone else. We'll close the public portion of the meeting. We'll go to Mr. Toy and get staff comment. I'm sorry, first of all, I'm gonna go back to Mr. Peterson, excuse me. Mr. Peterson, can you uh answer a couple of questions uh from uh that was from the the comments from the public? One regarding any overnight stays being permitted on the premises and whether or not there's any uh plans to open up Hagman Street. To this development.
Absolutely. Kurt Peterson here. Uh neither Hagman nor Yates nor Oak Grove nor what is it Maddox, none of those streets that. Abut the subject property will be extended. We're keeping everything in its natural state, so no extension of Hagman. And then in terms of overnight stay, it's certainly, you know, just hearing Nick's vision and everything, there's the the primary goal here is not to have overnight stays. It's what I described. But we don't want to limit the possibility that there could be, you know, a one-night overnight or something like that from time to time. Which of course would be secure and done very professionally, but it's not the primary objective.
And that would be a supervised situation in that instance. Is that correct?
All for educational purposes. Exactly right. If 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 that's done at all.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, well now go to uh Mr. Toy and get staff comment.
And through the chairman, Curtis, I had a quick question related to a gating or security across the front. Will there be will there be a gate across the front entrance?
Yes, there will be with a Knox box. Yeah, so when we're done each day, the gate will be locked, so people cannot come into our parking lot. And a Knox box will be there so that in an emergency situation, uh fire trucks, et cetera, could get in.
Appreciate it. Thank you. So it's this is a pretty unique project that we actually have not seen before where. Uh private entities coming in to really develop the site at a site and build nature trails and kind of have a youth camp setting. With that, staff recommends approval of the property subject to the stipulations outlined in the staff report.
And thank you. Questions for staff? Commissioner Jones.
No question. I was just wanting to make a motion.
Okay, we're gonna need five. First one will be on the master plan amendment.
Motion to approve the master plan amendment twenty-two-two dash zero-one-four. Subject to staff stipulations and comments.
Okay, most of the major approved the master plan, master plan amendment. Is there a second? Mr. Miller, is that a second? Thank you. Any discussion on the motion for the master plan amendment? Seeing none, roll call.
Jones.
I.
Miller.
I.
Paulie.
Hi.
Ward.
I.
Beth.
Hi.
Conley.
I.
Ernst.
I.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to recommend approval of M P L twenty-two-two. Dash zero-one-four, subject to the conditions in the staff report. Passes seven in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. Now I will entertain one on the change of zone. Commissioner Jones.
Motion to approve changes on case number two-zero-two-two dash zero-two-three, subject to staff stipulations and comments.
Thank you. Motion to approve change of zone made by Commissioner Jones. Is there a second? Mr. Paulie.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on change of zone? Seeing none, roll call.
Jones.
I.
Miller.
I.
Paulie.
I.
Ward.
I.
Beth.
I.
Conley.
I.
Ernst.
I.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to recommend approval of C O Z twenty-two-two dash zero-two-three. Subject to the conditions in the staff report. Passes seven in favor, none opposed.
Thank you. And now I'll need one on the special use permit. Commissioner Jones.
Motion to approve special use permit case number two-zero-two-two dash zero-seven-three. Subject to staff stipulations and comments.
Thank you. Motion to approve the special use permit made by Commissioner Jones. Uh is that a second, Commissioner Miller? Thank you. Any discussion on the? Special use permit, motion for approval. Seeing none, roll call.
Jones.
I.
Miller.
I.
Paulie.
I.
Ward.
I.
Beth.
I.
Conley.
I.
Ernst.
I.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to uh recommend approval of S P twenty-two-two dash zero-seven-three. Subject to the conditions in the staff report. Passes seven in favor and none opposed.
Now I will need one on the plat. Commissioner Jones.
Motion to approve plaque case number two-zero-two-two that dash zero-two-one, subject to staff.
I'm sorry, you cut off at the very subject to staff stipulation and comments?
I'm sorry, yes.
Thank you. Is that a second, Commissioner Paulie?
It is.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion for approval for the plat? Seeing none, roll call.
Jones.
I.
Miller.
I.
Paulie.
I.
Ward.
I.
Beth.
I.
Conley.
I.
Ernst.
I.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to approve flat twenty-two-two dash zero-two-one. Subject to the conditions in the staff report. Passes seven in favor, none opposed.
And finally, we'll need a motion for the plan review. Commissioner Jones.
Motion to approve plan review case number two-zero-two-two dash zero-two-seven. Staff stipulations, I I apologize. Case number two-zero-two-two dash zero-two-four, subject to staff stipulations and comments.
Thank you very much. Motion uh for approval made by Commissioner Jones, a second commissioner Miller.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion for approval on the plan review? Seeing none, roll call.
Jones.
I.
Miller.
I.
Paulie.
I.
Ward.
I.
Beth.
I.
Conley.
I.
Ernst.
I.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to recommend approval of P R twenty-two-two dash zero-two-four. Subject to the conditions in the staff report. Passes seven in favor, none opposed.
Thank you. The use cases will be heard once again on August twenty-fifth at seven P M before the Board of Commissioners. Thank you, Mr. Peterson.
Thank you all.
Our next application is special use permit S P twenty-two-one dash zero-six-nine. United Truck Repair. Special use permit to operate. An inspection and light maintenance facility for United Truck Repair. At four fifty-one South Fourteenth Street. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations. The official zoning map for the area in question. The city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question. The staff report detachment dated August eighth, twenty-two-two. The application, other documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant. In furtherance of the case and contained in the official file. The notice in the one dot echo and the notices to property owners. Does any member of the commission have any contact to disclose with regard to this case?
No.
Mr. Chairman, this case was remanded back. From the Board of Commissioners on July twenty-eighth. Um you may want to have Mr. Toy explain to the commission why it was remanded.
All right, thank you. We'll go to Mr. Toy, please, for an explanation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So on July twenty-eighth, the Board of Commissioners remanded this back by actually specifically Commissioner McKernan. To the planning commission, so we can have thirty days to submit. New plan or submit plans uh for the petition and regardless of the state or what happens in those three days. It'll be back before you on September twelfth. Regardless if there's plans or no plans submitted this the last three days that they have for this petition.
Okay, and and Mr. Toy, just for clarification, this was recommended for denial by the planning commission last month. Is that correct? And it was sent back by the Board of Commissioners for an additional thirty days.
Yes, that is correct.
All right, thank you. Uh is the applicant in the audience tonight?
Yes, sir. Yes, Chairman.
Okay, and so. Okay, do we need to go to the applicant or do we are we looking for a thirty-day hold? Okay, Janet is saying yes, so. Uh Mr. Singh Pata, do you want to come to the microphone, please, and?
Just one moment.
G'day, Will Anderson, B H C for the applicant, um United Truck Repair. Um we have already submitted additional stuff straight after. I'd say um the Board of Commissioners agreed to send it back. Um and my understanding from the document so far is the planning department will meet with us to discuss. The uh the additional information that's been submitted.
Okay, so Mr. Anderson, the motion for denial from the planning commission last month got the attention of the applicant. And we're starting to move forward. Is that correct?
They've spent quite a bit of money trying to catch up, yes.
Okay, all right. So and so your request tonight is for a thirty-day holdover, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and Janet, what would that meeting date be if that were to be approved?
That date is September the twelfth, Mr. Chair.
September twelfth. Okay, we'll go to Commissioner Conley for a question.
I got a question for Patrick. Uh is that passed? Because we've already given up the ninety days. Uh well, well, can we still give some additional thirty days, Patrick?
Yes, we can give up to a hundred and twenty. That's the max.
Okay, all right. All right, thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff? Hey, I'm gonna go ahead and open this up to the public just in case somebody came tonight. Is there anyone in the audience that wanted to speak in favor of or in opposition? To this application, please raise your hand or come to the microphone. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public portion of the meeting. Uh Mr. Toy, do you have any final comments from staff perspective?
The applicant has until August twenty-third to submit plans, therefore we can have revisions if necessary. And that is it. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions for staff? Seeing none, I will stand for a motion. Christopher Ernst.
In deference to Commissioner McKernan. And knowing this will be the last swing at it, I would move for a thirty-day holdover.
Thank you. Motion is for a thirty-day holdover made by Commissioner Ernst. Is that a second, Commissioner Miller?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion for thirty-day holdover? Commissioner Conley. You're still muted, sir.
Yeah, I just want the applicant to know that they need to provide the information that is needed for staff. And I mean, we don't want to see any pictures of where they just passed. They need to do certain areas large enough. To where we can see the significant. Change in what they've done done. Um and and like I said, this is the last thirty days. Thank you.
I agree with you, Commissioner Conley. Thank you. Any further discussion on the motion for holdover? Seeing none, roll call.
Jones.
I.
Miller.
I.
Paulie.
I.
Ward.
I.
Beth.
I.
Conley.
I.
Ernst.
I.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to hold over this application. Until the September twelve, twenty-two-two City Planning Commission meeting. For additional plans and information to be submitted submitted to staff for review. Passes seven in favor, none opposed.
Thank you.
Our next application is special use permit S P twenty-two-two dash zero-three-seven. Daniel Jansen with me and my uncle LLC. Special use permit for storage for landscaping business inside a two-thousand-square-foot outbuilding. At two-thirty South Sixty-Fifth Street. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations. The official zoning map for the area in question. The city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question. The staff report attachment stated August eighth, twenty-two-two. The application, other documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant. In furtherance of the case and contained in the official file. The notice in the one dot echo and the notices to property owners. Does any member of the commission have any contact to disclose with regard to this case?
No.
Thank you.
Mr. Jansen, are you in the audience?
Uh my name is Tom Stible. I office at five oh nine Armstrong in Kansas City, Kansas, six-six-one oh three. Six-six-one oh one. I'm sorry, I'm here on behalf of the applicant and then requesting the commission follow the staff recommendation and approve. Uh special use permit two oh two-two dash oh thirty-seven. The applicant is committed to fulfilling the planning department guidelines, but requests a waiver or deviation from the guidelines. The staff identified as needing an approved deviation as listed on page fifteen of the staff report. This is really two areas. One is pedestrian uh connections and then the other is building materials. On pedestrian connections, we request the deviation due to the low volume of pedestrian traffic. It's usually only ten to twelve cars entering the parking lot each day during the eight hours that the skate park operates. Uh nearly all are students of the skate park school and there's no significant truck, public traffic like there might be at an office park or a medical building. Uh regarding the building materials, this is an existing building that has been there for about fifty years. Um if you look at the photos on page twenty-two, um which were taken from the streets, both Speaker Road and Sixty-Fifth Street. Building is barely visible to traffic passing the site. Building will be further screened by the installation of the landscaping that's shown on the landscaping plan that's on pages twenty-four and twenty-five. Um so we ask that you recognize that staff has that from time to time deviations from the guidelines may be necessary. Thank you for considering our request. And we again ask approval for this special permit.
I'm gonna, I'm sorry, sir, I'm gonna have to ask you to back up to the first deviations while I was pulling up the case. You were going through it so fast, which. What what's the other one on the parking that you're asking for a deviation on and what type of deviation are you asking for?
Well, they um they asked for um. The deviation on page fifteen is um lack of curbing or raised uh. Uh traffic calming device which could actually be installed. Um if you look at the plan on page um. Twenty-five, you can see that there's a designated sidewalk crossing the parking lot there in the middle into the door entry and that could be a raised. Uh sidewalk that would serve a traffic pa- uh traffic calming purpose. Um the building itself is a metal building um that has been there for a long time. Uh the cost of providing a. Well, I think we're talking about not only that metal building, but the big one. Uh the cost of providing um. That really is 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 fairly prohibitive um due to the. Income that the property can generate. We had discussions with staff about it and staff. Um at recommended then that we ask for this deviation from the. Um from this, from the requirements of uh putting a masonry on the outside of the building.
Okay, questions from the staff. I'm assuming questions from the commission. Commissioner Jones.
Yes, what is the long-term uh plan for storage? It's this is to be a temporary, a temporary use of the property.
Uh this is a, this is a two-year temporary application that cannot be renewed. Uh this, the small outbuilding, there's two leases on that property, the skate park and the big building and then the small building. Um has a landscaping business that was actually has been there before the current owner bought the property. Um and um there are used some of that parking space outside for storage. The landscaping business um is a retail business. There's no trucks entering the site. What happens there is that they have their prop- their uh products delivered to the. Where they're going to do the work and it's when they have leftover material from the job that they bring it in. They bring it in usually in the back of a pickup truck. So there's no big um. Um there's no large trucks entering the property there.
Commissioner Jones, that's your question or are you are you getting at the mess that we see in these photos?
Yeah, so that being said, the petitioner is aware that they need a long-term plan.
The the applicant is aware that this is a going to be a two-year lease that um will end at the end of two years, yes. And he's gonna have to find some other uh purpose for that structure.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? I I guess I I have a couple. I guess I have a couple, as far as, looking at the photographs that we're seeing of the structure, there's, there's quite a bit of, quite a bit of mess going on as far as storage, there's things piled up on the sides, what, is that all gonna remain? The landscape, I guess the landscaping material storage area, is that all gonna continue to, to stay the way that it is?
Well, the landscaping storage is, is the reason why they're requesting, the outside storage is the reason why they're requesting this special use permit. So there is going to be some outside storage.
Well, it looks like they're already doing it, so what, I mean, are you requesting to continue to do it, or we looking at less, or what are we looking, I mean, it's already there?
Well, we're, we're trying to bring this property into conformance with the rules. Yes, it is, it is, it is there, it was there before this person purchased the property. What we have tried to do is, is help him get to where he is in compliance with the rules, understanding that his lease is gonna have to terminate at the end of this period of time.
Okay, maybe I can get more clarity when I talk to the staff, I feel like you're, you stopped short on all your answers with me, so I'm just gonna wait and see if I can get that from the staff, so I'm gonna move on, any other questions for the applicants representative? Seeing none, we'll go to the audience, anyone in the audience want to speak to, in favor of or in opposition to this request, please raise your hand or come to the microphone. Seeing none, we'll close the public portion of the meeting, we'll go to Mr. Toy, and we'll get his comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, so to answer questions in the screen right now, you kind of see stuff that's in kind of a a way, a nice way of saying it, for example, the diesel tank has to be removed actually in nine days, so it says in the staff report.
I can't hear, I can't hear.
Yeah.
Can you hear me now, Commissioner Connolly?
We're, we're having a really hard time with your microphone, Byron, I gotta tell you.
Okay, is that, is this, is this better?
Marginally.
Marginally, okay.
Yeah, not, no, actually, it's not, you're cutting in, and it's, it's not good.
Okay. So the applicant's diesel tank that you see in the picture in the top right
Yes.
has, has to be removed by August 17th. That's one thing that has to be cleaned up on the site. In general, the landscaping materials and equipment that's stored within that fenced, within this fenced area here has to be in an orderly manner. It cannot be disheveled into all of the place.
So it cannot look the way it does right now?
It cannot, cannot look the way it does right now, that is correct. Behind this, behind this enclosure will be a privacy fence, because you cannot see it from public view, which you will be able to see clearly if you were driving down 65th Street. So this will be a privacy fence, that'll be erected to screen anything within this enclosure, there's already a natural buffer with trees to the west, to the north, but this has to be screened from public view. Also, as the applicant said, this is for two years and two years only. So this cannot come back for renewal, asking for an additional time to find another location, it's within two years of this use is, is over. And then possibly the skate park could expand. The skate park can expand possibly this area or further out in parking lot to the, to the east, but this use specifically will end after two years. The staff recommends approval.
What about the deviations passed for by the applicant?
So the skate park has already come through with the rest, with their special use permit.
Right.
So this solely is for the existing shed, so given the fact that this is temporary in nature, and the shed may not be there after two years, doesn't really make a lot of sense with the expense of putting in masonry materials when the shed may be gone to, to a better and higher use, what that uses, we do not know yet, but to put in, to put in the money to make that, to make those upgrades, when in fact, the use itself is only there for two years, doesn't make a ton of sense. So staff is accepting of the deviation as requested by the applicant.
Okay, Commissioner Connolly, have a question?
Do we have any violation on this property prior? Do we have any prior violations?
So there is no, yes, I can hear you, Commissioner. So there are five code enforcement violations for overgrown vegetation, junk on the property from 2006, 2017, these are previous owners, but other than that, there's no, there's nothing related to noise or disturbance, or any building comment or code inspection cases.
All right, thank you.
Were those notice of violations cleared?
It appears that, looking at the staff report, that only one citation was later rescinded after it was discovered the overgrown vegetation was in the public right of way, not on the subject property. So, or closed.
Okay.
There should say that man for, or closed.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Ernst?
This may be more an observation, but I distinctly remember when we talked about the skate park and changing this and that, that the change from R1 to commercial came up in that all manner of things might end up here, and I can't help but think we're seeing the result of that. This is all manner of things, in my opinion. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Other questions or comments for staff? Okay, seeing none, I will stand for a motion. Commissioner Connolly? You're muted, Commissioner Connolly.
I'm making a motion to approve for one year with staff stipulations.
Motion is for one year, and does that include the deviations requested by the applicant?
Yes.
Motion is for approval for one year, including the deviations requested by the applicant, is there a second? Commissioner Ernst?
I'll second that for him.
Alright, thank you. Motion is for one year, moved and seconded, is there a discussion on the motion for approval? Commissioner Miller?
I just had a question for staff on that, because since, am I misremembering, but since that was for two years and it was not able to be renewed, if, if we make the motion for one year, are we able to renew it for another year? When that point comes?
You could, for one more year, that would fulfill its two-year, the two-year term limit.
Is the rationale, Commissioner Connolly, for one year, just to see how we're doing?
Correct.
Okay, any further discussion? Motion is for one year. Seeing none, roll call, please.
Jones?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Polly?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Beth?
Aye.
Connolly?
Aye.
Ernst?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to recommend approval of SP 2022-037 for one year, subject to the conditions in the staff report passes and, including the deviations, passes seven in favor and none opposed.
Thank you, this will be heard once again on August 25th at 7:00 PM before the Board of County Commissioners.
Our next application is special use permit SP 2022-067, Brian Glazer, special use permit to operate a short-term rental at 733 Ohio Avenue. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations, the official zoning map for the area in question, the city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question, the staff report and attachments dated August 8, 2022, the application and other documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant in furthest of the case and contained in the official file, the notice in the Y dot echo and the notices to property owners. Does any member of the commission have any contact to disclose with regard to this case?
No. No.
Thank you.
Hey, Mr., is it Glazer or Glasser?
Glasser.
Glasser, okay, go ahead and give us your, you already did, but go ahead and give us your name and address, please, for the record, tell us what you'd like to do here.
Yeah, my name is Brian Glasser, I represent AKC Co-Investments LLC, currently office over at 730 Minnesota Ave here in Kansas City, Kansas. I'm applying for a special use permit for a short-term rental at 733 Ohio. Everything that the staff has asked me to do, I've completed. This is not our first special use permit, we've, we've done them before and had them approved as well, and have had no issues here in the city, doing what we do, and look forward to, you know, running another one.
Right, thank you, and you do not live on site, is that correct?
Sorry, could you repeat that, sir?
You do not live on site, correct?
I do not live on site at this one, no.
Alright, thank you. Any questions for the applicant? Okay, seeing none, anyone in the audience want to speak in favor of or in opposition to this request, please raise your hand or come to the microphone. I'm seeing none, so we'll close the public portion of the meeting, we'll go to Mr. Toy, get his staff comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, this special use permit will be approved or recommended for approval by staff for one year, because the applicant does not live within the residence, with that, staff recommends approval.
Alright, thank you, any questions for staff, the recommendation is for a one-year approval. Seeing none, I'll stand for a motion. Commissioner Jones?
Motion to approve the petitioner's request, subject to staff stipulations and comments.
Thank you, motion is for approval by Commissioner Jones, is that a second, Commissioner Connolly?
Yes, that's the second.
Thank you, moved to seconded for approval, any discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Jones?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Polly?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Beth?
Aye.
Connolly?
Aye.
Ernst?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to recommend approval of SP 2022-067 for one year, subject to the conditions in the staff report passes seven in favor and none opposed.
Thank you, this will be heard once again, August 20th, I'm sorry, August 25th at 7:00 PM before the Board of County Commissioners.
Our next application is special use permit application SP 2022-068, special use permit for a short-term rental at 3008 South 9th Street. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations, the official zoning map for the area in question, the city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question, the staff report attachments dated August 8, 2022, the application and other documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant in furthest of the case and contained in the official file, the notice in the Y dot echo and the notices to property owners. Does any member of the commission have any contact to disclose with regard to this case?
No.
Thank you.
Yes, Ms. Is it Bellardi?
Yes.
Got you queued up, ready to speak, if you would, please give us your name and address, and tell us what you'd like to do.
Sure, my name is Sarah Bellardi, and I'm at 3008 South 9th Street, Kansas City, Kansas. My husband and I bought this property earlier this year, and we are applying for a short-term rental permit. We are from out of state, that we have family in the area, and we visit our nephews and family there frequently. We plan to use this as a vacation home and rent it out as a short-term rental when we are not there. We spent the summer there with family renovating the property and completing the requirements needed.
Okay, thank you, any questions for the applicant? Seeing none, we'll go to the audience, anyone in the audience want to speak in favor of or in opposition to this request, please raise your hand or come to the microphone if you're in the audience.
We have one person in the audience.
Okay, thank you, go ahead and give us, please, your name and address.
Yes, my name is Leslie Guthrie, and my address is 2933 South 9th Street, Kansas City, Kansas. There was a mention earlier that property owners got notifications, we live three houses down, and I don't recall receiving any notification, I'm just like to put that on record, but also generally speaking, I am in opposition of this, I don't think that the residents in our area need short-term rentals, there are plenty of hotels and things like that in the surrounding area already, what we need is affordable housing, so turning this into an Airbnb is not going to help contribute to positive things in our neighborhood, and that's what I'd like to see.
Alright, thank you very much, anyone else? Seeing none, we'll close the public portion of the meeting, we'll go to Mr. Toy, get staff comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The staff understands the, the individual that's spoken opposition to this as far as need for affordable housing, specifically in Rosedale, which is an ongoing issue that we have seen lately with the number of Airbnbs that we've seen come through our, our office. This is only for one year, because the applicant does not reside on the property, is not living on the property. So this can be reviewed again to see if this is essentially a viable use in one year, but with that, staff recommends approval.
Alright, thank you, questions for staff?
Commissioner Ward.
Okay, Commissioner Ward, go ahead.
Have there been any issues with the property that they've, so far, or past issues?
There have been some, there's been some issues with previous, with the previous owner, but not these owners specifically, since they've taken ownership of the property.
Are there any other rental properties like this in the area itself, within a few block radius, or is this the only one for, or do you know, I should say?
I mean, related to the Airbnb, short-term rental, VRBO, this is the one that we've had come up in this immediate area, but there may be rental property, but I would not know, off the top of my head.
Commissioner Jones, question?
Just to be sure, we don't have, Byron, any rules or regulations right now in place where there's a limitation on the number of Airbnb properties within a certain mile radius?
No, there's, no, there's not ordinance that we've created or developed that, whether it's radius, a radius around specific area, or just, if you wanna call it a quota, a number of units or Airbnbs short-term rentals that are allowed within a geographic, geographic boundary, excuse me, no, there's nothing we have created for that.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions for staff? Seeing none, I'll stand for a motion. Commissioner Jones?
Motion to approve the petitioner's request for one year, subject to staff stipulations and comments.
Thank you, motion for approval made by Commissioner Jones, is that a second, Commissioner Connolly?
Correct.
Thank you, any discussion on the motion for approval? Seeing none, roll call.
Jones?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Polly?
Aye.
Ward?
Nay.
Beth?
Aye.
Connolly?
Aye.
Ernst?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to recommend approval of SP 2022-068 for one year, subject to the conditions in the staff report passes six in favor and one opposed.
Thank you, this will be heard once again, August 25th, 7:00 PM before the Board of County Commissioners, thank you very much.
Our next application is special use permit SP 2022-069, G and J Entertainment, special use permit for live entertainment in conjunction with an existing drinking establishment at 4929 State Avenue. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations, the official zoning map for the area in question, the city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question, the staff report and attachments dated August 8, 2022, the application and other documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant in furthest of the case and contained in the official file, the notice in the Y dot echo and the notices to property owners. The notice in the wind dot echo and the notices to property owners. Does any member of the commission have any contact to disclose with regard to this case?
No.
No.
Thank you.
Okay, sir, if you would, please go ahead and give us your name and address, please, and tell us what you'd like to do.
Yes, my name is Jesus Gonzalez, I'm the owner on the G and J Entertainment. The address is forty-nine twenty-nine State Avenue, Kansas City, Kansas. I need a translator.
Hi, my name is Romero. We're looking to-
I need your, I need your name and address too, please.
Romero Rosales, fourteen oh five Massachusetts Street, Lawrence, Kansas.
Alright, thank you, go ahead.
Yeah, we're looking for an entertainment license to provide live music every once in a while at the current location, forty-nine twenty-nine State Avenue.
And is that something that's done there currently now?
I'm sorry?
Is that something that's currently done there now?
Yes.
You already have, you have current live entertainment?
We were doing it and then we got shut down, said that we needed this entertainment license, so that's why we're here now.
Okay, great, thank you, questions for the applicant?
What's, what's the name of the business?
Commissioner Ward?
Yes, sorry.
The business is Eastless VP Sports Bar. We serve food and just do karaoke and whatnot, but we'd like to bring some live music every once in a while.
Okay, Commissioner Connolly?
Yeah, I guess my question was, is this live music going to be indoor or outdoors?
It'll be indoor.
Alright, thank you. Any other questions for the applicant? Seeing none, we'll go to the audience, anyone tonight want to speak in favor of or in opposition to this request? Please come to the microphone if you're in the commission chambers or raise your hand online. They sing, now we'll close the public portion of the meeting, we'll go to Mr. Toy, get staff comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The live entertainment itself must cease, all operations must cease by one AM. Also, relate some of the typical standards, things we have in the report. ID scanners required, also doors must be closed, windows must be closed as far as live music cannot be amplified outside, camping lighting, outside if there's a patio. That has to be all kept inside with that staff recommends approval for two years.
Thank you, questions for staff? Commissioner Jones?
Byron, we don't request different hours for the Monday through Friday, I see it's ten AM to one AM daily, including weekdays.
I mean, considering, excuse me, Commissioner, considering it is along a commercial corridor and there's commercial all around this as opposed to if there's residents, maybe a budding yet, we probably would restrict the hours during a weekday. But the ironically, the Nippon Resource Center is directly to behind it to the south. And there are the commercial establishments on either side of this, so again, one AM closing time during the weekday. Not completely out of character.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions for the staff? Seeing none, I will stand for a motion. Commissioner Connolly?
Yeah, I make a motion to approve, I'm trying to find the-
Case number is SP twenty twenty-two dash zero sixty-nine, is that what you're looking for?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah, I make a motion to approve, SP twenty twenty-two zero sixty-nine with staff stipulations.
Alright, thank you, is that a second, Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Thank you, the move is seconded for approval, any discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Jones?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Paulie?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Beth?
Aye.
Connolly?
Aye.
Ernst?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to recommend approval of SP twenty twenty-two dash zero six nine for two years. Subject to the conditions and the staff report passes seven in favor and none opposed.
Thank you, gentlemen, this will be heard once again on August twenty-fifth at seven PM in the same place before the Board of County Commissioners, good luck.
Thank you.
Our next application is special use permit SP twenty twenty-two dash zero seven two. James Sullivan, special use permit for a used car dealership at fourteen oh one Merriam Lane. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations. The official zoning map for the area in question. The city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question. The staff report and attachments stated August eighth, twenty twenty-two. The application and other documents. Plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant. Inference of the case and contained in the official file. The notice in the wind dot echo and the notices to property owners. Does any member of the commission have any contact to disclose with regard to this case?
No.
No. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen, go ahead and please give us your name and address and tell us about this project.
Good evening, commission members, I'm Jim Sullivan with Sullivan Palmer Architects, eight six two one Johnson Drive in Merriam, Kansas. And I'd just like to go through a, a few of the items on this proposal from the property owner and just hand it off back to Baha to talk about other things that, some of which hopefully I had forgotten. But the property is about one point nine acres. The proposal includes redevelopment and reinvigoration of the southwest approximately half of that property. It's backed by Turkey Creek. So we have a definite rear property, the property was very much overgrown. And the property owner has spent quite a bit of time cleaning up the property, getting rid of brush. Re- repairing and painting the existing three thousand square foot existing building on the property. The building is masonry, it's in relatively good shape now with some of the time and effort that they've spent redoing that. The, the proposal includes the, the use of car sales and repair. The existing three thousand square foot building would be for offices for their business and a showroom at the south portion of the, of the building, there would be a new twelve hundred square foot building located on the property as well that would be compliant with the C three zoning regulations, full four-sided architecture in compliance with long-term materials and that sort of thing. One of the deviations that we have proposed is to basically provide a, a new building that looks like a new building and have the existing building look like what it is. It is amazing, the existing building is masonry, it has been repaired and repainted and such, it's really in, in relatively good shape at this point, and we can't see either to make our new building look like a nineteen sixties building like the other building on the property or vice versa. So we'd like to propose that deviation to you. The remainder of the, the developed site has a double entrance that was put in fairly recently, we believe, we'd like to keep that, we're going to be obviously putting in landscaping and repairing the and adding to the the asphalt parking lots and such, just a general compliance that, that you've and staff have recommended to us, so that's, that's in a nutshell what we propose, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, my name is Baha Hamal, I'm the general contractor, I'll be working with Jim Sullivan and the owner, and all we try to do is to actually make this property fair, flourish the whole area. It's, it is on an intersection as well as that area, it's completely dead. And if you drive by, you don't see many businesses, and I think if we make that work we'll get the whole area actually doing really well, we'll, we'll attract more businesses coming in there. The other thing that I've noticed that we don't have any, we have a subject tank there in that property. And right at the corner, there is the main sewer. And I propose and talk to some of the owners in the area. If we can, with the help of them and the city, we can have sewer line goes in, in between, and that will attract even more businesses. So I mean, that's what we'd like to do and hopefully with your guidance, we will come to an agreement.
Alright, thank you, and sir, I need your address, please, for the record.
I beg your pardon?
I need your address, please, for the record, you gave us your name but not your address.
Yes, one one six one three Oak Mine Street, Overland Park, Kansas.
Thank you very much, any questions for the applicant's representatives? They sing none, we'll go to the audience, anyone in the audience, whether it be in the chambers or online, want to speak in favor of or in opposition to this request, please raise your hand or come to the microphone.
We do have one person in the chambers.
Alright, thank you. Thank you, yes, or give us your name, please, and address?
Sure, Dave Kaufman, five eight three zero Bell Road, Shawnee, Kansas. I do own two properties within two hundred feet of their proposed investment property there. Thirteen twenty-eight Merriam Lane and also thirteen thirty Merriam Lane. I am in full support, that area really can use some improvement, they're looking to really put some financial resources into that area, and I think it would be good for the community there, but I am in favor.
Alright, thank you very much, anyone else? Seeing none, we'll close the public portion of the meeting, we'll go to Mr. Toy and get staff comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Staff would like to kind of note that the southern boundary of the property. Here, you see the split zoning, that's C three and M two. They'll have to come back for a change of zone to remove that split zoning, you kind of want to have one cohesive parcel with one, the same zoning, so it makes sense. So they'll come back to rezone that. Also, they'll be putting a trail in along Turkey Creek to comply with the self-walking trails master plan, staff recommends approval.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Commissioner Ernst?
Byron, I believe that building is painted currently.
I believe that is correct, it's more like off-white cream color.
I thought we kind of had a thing against painting brick as opposed to taking it back to the natural.
If it's cinder block, we would probably leave, but if it's true masonry brick or brick veneer. We we would ask for it to be sandblasted, removed, the deviation would be at your discretion whether or not you wanted them to do that or not.
Hey, here. Byron, could you go again?
Yes, I can repeat that. The typically in the code where it says if there's masonry on the, on the, there's masonry on the, on the facade and it's painted, the paint is removed typically by sandblaster or some other type of way to do it. If the applicant does not want to do that, they can ask for a deviation, which that's what they're asking to keep the building, the existing building as is, by keeping it painted. That is your, that is your discretion whether or not to grant that, that deviation.
I think that answers my question, yes, it is brick, has been for a really long time.
Okay, thank you, any other questions for staff? Seeing none, I will stand for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, the, the applicant would like to speak.
Okay, typical, alright, go, is it something quick that we can address because? Go ahead.
Indicate, yes.
Just, just want to touch on the, the trail that's proposed along Merriam Lane, that's part of the, the Johnson County or the-
Sidewalks and Trails master plan?
Yes, that's right. Obviously, we, we haven't, we haven't seen any proposal on that trail, we, there was a comment on the staff report about the possibility of of the owner contributing to this trail. We really know very little about it and, and we are not in agreement to provide the trail, if there was a question on that.
There wasn't, so I okay, I'm gonna go, I'm, I'm gonna go back to the commission, so questions from the commission, Commissioner Connolly?
Oh yeah, I guess, I mean, I, I guess what he said, I mean, he's not in agreements with, with, with staff is recommending, is that what he's saying?
With regard to the trail that he, they don't have enough information on?
Yes, I mean, at, at the-
Okay, alright, thanks.
So at this point, any other questions from the commission for staff? Okay, if seeing that, I'll stand for a motion. Go ahead, Commissioner Connolly? You're muted, Commissioner Connolly?
I make a motion for hold over for thirty days, so staff and petitioner can come to some type of an agreement on the requirements of the trail and have a clear understanding and also the deviation of the bricks. They need to come to some type of an agreement, so I make a motion to hold it over for thirty days.
A motion to hold over for thirty days made, made by Commissioner Connolly to address the trail system as well as the exterior brick. Any, I'm sorry, is that a second, Commissioner Ernst?
Yes, sir.
It's the second of that, Commissioner Ernst, any discussion on the motion for thirty-day holdover to September twelfth, is that correct, Janet?
That's correct, sir.
Thank you, any discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Jones?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Paulie?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Beth?
Aye.
Connolly?
Aye.
Ernst?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to hold over SP twenty twenty-two dashes, zero seven two until the September twelfth meeting for the staff and applicant to come to an agreement on the two requested deviations passes, seven in favor and none opposed.
Alright, thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, before I call our last item, Alyssa, could I get you to show your video so that I can introduce you to the planning commission? I'd like to introduce you to our new long-range planner, Alyssa Marcy. She has taken Kim Portia's place. And she's on the meeting tonight because we're getting ready to do consideration of the plans that we discussed last month. And also we have Anthony Gallo with us. So I'm gonna go ahead and call them, and Anthony, I have promoted you and made you a co-host so you can share your spring. So the three plans that we're gonna consider for approval by resolution tonight are the Northeast Kansas City, Kansas Heritage Trail Plan. The Merriam Connected Corridor Plan. And the Go Dot Countywide Strategic Mobility Plan. Mr. Chairman, Mr. Gallo is going to present all three of these at the same time and then we will vote on them separately.
Alright, thank you, before we go to that, Commissioner Connolly, your hand was up, did, did you, did you have a question or a comment?
I'll save it for the end, I'm sorry.
Okay, alright, no problem, thank you. Okay, Mr. Gallo, the floor is yours.
Thank you, thank you, members of the commission, thank you, Ms. Parker. Again, my name's Anthony Gallo, I'm a member of the consultant team for the Go Dot- I'm a member of the consultant team for the GoDOT Strategic Mobility Plan and also being incorporated by reference tonight. The Northeast KCK Heritage Trail Plan and the Merriam Connected Corridor Plan. All three plans were presented to the Planning Commission and Board of Commissioners last month. Comments from staff and stakeholders have been received and incorporated into the final plans. These plans are summarized in this presentation tonight, are intending to be improved by this mission and adopted by the Board of Commissioners through three individual resolutions. All three plans are funded by a Mark Planning Sustainable Places Grant through three individual grants with additional funding in the UG and partner cities where applicable. GoDOT, which is a countywide plan, is meant to serve as a consolidated unified location for all previous and ongoing planning efforts in the county. So as such, we're bringing the two plans by reference, including any applicable recommendations and action items. Again, I'm presenting on behalf of all three project teams and the Department of Planning and Urban Design for consolidation purposes. So I'll start with the Northeast KCK Heritage Trail Plan. I want to recognize the project team led by Groundwork NRG. And I'm presenting on their behalf. The plan has four main pillars. One, history, capturing the rich history of the Northeast KCK area with memorialization and preservation. Mobility, connecting residents and visitors by means of all modes, all ages and all abilities. Environment, creating, enhancing and restoring green space to improve quality of life and address needed stormwater issues. And economic development, the idea of development without displacement, providing shopping areas and essential services while supporting neighborhood preservation and growth and stimulating equitable community investment. This plan in particular was defined by its community-based participatory research effort. There was a significant amount of effort spent out in the community, listening and learning, defining the criteria for what needed to go in the plan and ultimately settling on a preferred alignment and set of recommendations. So the preferred trail route is broken up into three segments. They're in different colors on this map here. The town trail is in gold. It runs from 10th to the northeast up to Quandara Townsite. It utilizes some existing trails along Jersey Creek and strengthens the connections between the neighborhood and the town site. The Hart Trail in red is a loop between Northeast KCK and downtown. It's centered on Summer Academy and connecting several parks and schools. It focuses on residential and commercial reinvestment. And then the River Trail in blue is a segment from Call Point up to 10th Street. And again, utilizes existing trails along Jersey Creek, improves that connection between Jersey Creek and Call Point and connects major green spaces. There are specific focus areas in the plan. Those are highlighted on the map in the one to four boxes, as well as potential connections or future expansions of the trail in dashed lines. Few other notes from this plan. Again, there's an equitable development scorecard for residents and stakeholders to provide feedback on proposed development projects through the lens of media-defined principles outlined in the plan. It's intended to be a tool for the land bank, groundwork NRG, Northeast KCK residents and other stakeholders to assess larger development projects. Those would be projects with 10 or more dwellings or 10,000 square feet or more, commercial, industrial or office space. It's got branding and signage that was developed for memorialization to give the trail that distinct placemaking. There's an online platform for folks to take a virtual tour and learn more about the history of the area. And then ultimately, the plan concludes with recommended phasing, understanding that there are funding constraints. There are four phases recommended in the plan, cost provided for each and grant, grant and partnership opportunities provided. And I'll take questions at the end on all three. And I believe we have some staff as well. So the second plan being presented here is the Merriam Connected Corridor Plan. I want to recognize the project team here as well, led by Olson. Again, I'm presenting on their behalf and behalf of Planning and Urban Design Team. Project was done in collaboration with the cities of Mission, Overland Park and Merriam. Many of the plan recommendations are actually focused outside of the UG as this plan builds upon the UG's Southwest Boulevard, Merriam Lane planning efforts, which were done previously. You can see on this map above several of the recommendations for the corridor, the Merriam Lane corridor within the UG. As you all are aware, there's already a two-lane section with bike lanes. There are some proposed redevelopments, trails and trail connections and monuments within the UG portion of the Merriam Lane corridor and that Turkey Creek Trail that was just mentioned a few moments ago. So within the UG, again, perhaps the most notable priority project, which is also noted in the GoDOT plan, is the expansion of the Turkey Creek Trail, connecting the trail and providing a comprehensive bicycle network with connections to new north-south routes. So sidewalk connections to adjacent neighborhoods, mixed-use redevelopment at key sites, transit improvements, recommendations for microtransit and a migration to a longer-term fixed route transit along the corridor. Gateway monuments. And then the last point, multi-benefit green infrastructure, combining stormwater management with other infrastructures such as trails. That's also noted in the Northeast KCK Heritage Trail Plan. That is a county-wide recommendation in the GoDOT plan. Again, we'll take questions at the end. So finally, the GoDOT Strategic Mobility Plan, which incorporates the two previous plans by reference. Again, GoDOT is the branded name for a countywide mobility plan and transit-oriented development or TOD strategy. It's a segue into the citywide master plan. It will essentially serve as the transportation element for the citywide master plan update. It's aiming to set up a shared vision of the future for transportation in across the entire county, including the independent cities. It's aiming to set the stage to find goals to move toward that said shared vision and establish metrics to track progress along the way. I want to emphasize the coordinated element of this plan. It's been coordinated across various UG departments, across stakeholders across the county, notably including the independent cities of Bonner Springs, Edwardsville, Lake Hoovera. It represents a paradigm shift, focus on all modes. Again, it's going to serve as the transportation element of the citywide master plan and essentially is the implementation element of the county's complete street ordinance. And it's built upon the back, it serves as a single unified location to define transportation policy and system plans. It's built on the back of many previous plans. It's really the culmination amalgamate, amalgamation of dozens of previous planning efforts, including two that we just heard from. So corridor plans, unconstrained visions for advancing a particular corridor like State Avenue 832. Area plans, Armory Hill being the most recent one, it's been adopted. Independent city plans, several recent efforts from Bonner Springs and Edwardsville. Modal plans, there's a sidewalk and trails master plan element that's being updated. Smart Moves, which is the entire KC region's transit plan, is incorporated in here. Mark's Climate Action Plan, the UG Complete Streets Ordinance. And then this will all serve as a segue into the upcoming citywide master plan update. So I'll reiterate again, the foundations report that we put out last year on the project website, that's an appendix to the GoDOT plan. This was an initial state-of-play effort to assess mobility across the county, what challenges and opportunities exist. A few key points for context that I think really set the stage for our strategy and downstream recommendations and actions. So in terms of regional context and our people, looking at Wyandotte County and KCK as part of the larger KC region, we're aware that the county is more diverse, less wealthy, has a lot of geographically dispersed job centers which impact mobility, and there are a lot of natural and man-made barriers, rails, streams, rivers, highways. From a mobility standpoint, several key metrics, 5,500 households without access to a car, 4,000 crashes a year, including 50 bike-ped crashes a year and 14 deaths since 2016. Most transit routes running 60-minute headways or longer, meaning a bus comes only once an hour or less. Lack of sidewalks or poor conditions for sidewalks that do exist and a few greenway and trail options currently. All of that gets to a quantitative metric that we've developed called Access to Opportunity, which is the number of jobs or key destinations you can get to in 30 minutes from where you live. So the number of schools, healthcare, education, parks, jobs. And within Wyandotte County, if you do not own a car, this metric is very poor. This isn't just a measure of transit accessibility. This is accounting for sidewalks, trails and roads that you can safely bike on, as well as job density and amenities such as grocery stores. So it's accounting for both transportation and land use. That's why you see some differences with Johnson County. Essentially, it was within Wyandotte County, the state of play today is that without access to a car, there are, the number of jobs and destinations that you can get to is pretty limited, except in the far eastern portion. So it's a measure of both transportation and land use. This will be used in the citywide master plan as a metric to measure how land use and transportation investments together can change, can change access to jobs and destinations. Another key metric that we want to mention is excess capacity. This is pretty unique to Wyandotte County. The idea that you have a lot of roadways in the county that are, were built to carry many more cars than they actually do today. That has some negative impacts, most notably on maintenance and safety, but also offers opportunities for things like retrofitting. So the challenges and opportunities that were identified of the course of the plans at the stage for the GoDOT Plan's five big ideas, the centerpiece of the mobility strategy. All recommendations and actions are oriented around one or more of these. So the first one is safety first, eliminating traffic deaths and protecting our residents, recommending to move forward with a Vision Zero Action Plan. This will go from groundwork research that Public Works and Planning Department have done into action for downstream funding and implementation. There's a lot of infrastructure build funding or implementing safety projects that the county is very well positioned for. Street design, one of the one, being brilliant at the basics, recognizing the streets or building blocks of our community. This is essentially the implementation of the county's complete streets ordinance, one to at least consider and open up the design criteria for all modes and abilities. The plan does provide an update to the county's recommended street cross-sections. Next-level transit, this is really carrying forward recommendations from previous transit planning efforts, focusing those transit investments for fast and frequent service along the Seventh Rainbow Corridors and along State Avenue, and then a supporting network of transit and mobility options elsewhere. That leads to the next big idea, prioritizing connections. That goes hand in hand with the above, providing those first mile and last mile connections to transit, most notably bike and pet infrastructure. And with that, the Sidewalk and Trails Master Plan, which was last done in 2012, has been updated as part of this plan. Does recognize several transformational trail corridors, including the Turkey Creek Trail, the Northeast KCK Heritage Trail, trail along K32 out to Bonner Springs and Edwardsville and a Jersey Creek City Park Trail. And then finally, investing in opportunity corridors. This is going to serve as a segue to the citywide master plan update, connecting land use and transportation. This is a recommendation to concentrate future growth in a sustainable way around transit-oriented and trail-oriented corridors. So again, State Avenue and Seventh and Rainbow, as well as the K32 Kansas Avenue corridors and the Northeast KCK Heritage Trail. Within the GoDOT mobility strategy, there's a lot of discussion around spending versus investing and the difference between the two. We want to position Wyandotte County for transportation improvements as investing in our community's future through the smart use of finite resources, spur future and private investment. Small projects that connect communities and improve safety and reduce barriers to accessing jobs and destinations often have a very high return on investment. So what comes out of this plan stemming from those five big ideas? Specific actions and policy recommendations. Again, there's an update to the Sidewalk and Trails Master Plan, so as a streets master plan update with recommended cross-sections, depending on the land use area type and functional classification of the roadway. There are policy modernization recommendations, including internal policies and processes within departments at the UG. The plan concludes with an action plan matrix that specifies action items that align with those five big ideas, as well as where those actions are coming from. Future funding opportunities, again, I mentioned the infrastructure bill. There are a lot of federal opportunities with the infrastructure bill that the county is well positioned for, as well as green infrastructure and climate-related opportunities and sources within, within the state of Kansas, such as from KDOT. Again, the GoDOT Strategic Mobility Plan is the, is going to segue into the citywide master plan update. It'll serve as the transportation element. We view this as a lasting process for Wyandotte County. This plan was developed at a quite unique point in time. We started that, you know, sort of in the height of the pandemic in early 2021. We want to think of transportation as a community asset and ingredient for community building. This requires continued investment, monitoring and internal alignment. So what's next? Again, we have incorporated comments from this commission, from UG staff, from various stakeholders, both internal within, within the county, different departments, and from independent cities and other agencies that have weighed in, as well as comments from the board. Look for approval from this commission and then adoption from the board later this month through three individual resolutions. After that, there's lots of immediate-term actions to carry out, grant applications, looking for infrastructure build funding, the segue into the citywide master plan. And then, as mentioned, moving forward one investment at a time, aiming to provide the current and future generations in the county lasting value and a vibrant and safe future for all. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gallo. Any questions, Commissioner Conley?
I just like to say, I mean, it looks great and everything. And, and, and I mean, I keep hearing you saying the funding and things like that. I mean, when, when do you think the first phase of us would, could start? Is there any funding there already for us to go ahead and get some of it done? Or, or we have to raise all the money at this point in time?
It's so, everything's incremental. There's, there's a series of action items that are, some of which are already underway, to be honest, some of which are internal. There are several items that are being targeted specifically for infrastructure bill grants that are going to move forward pretty quickly, hopefully. Others have, you know, yet to be identified, funding sources that, you know, will be, some of which may be borne by private developers, specifically with the Sidewalk and Trails Master Plan, looking to identify those locations where private developers would contribute. And then looking to incorporate certain improvements along with maintenance. So as maintenance comes around, as we look to, as we're repaving a roadway or redoing a road, reconstructing a roadway, implementing improvements at that time.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, what you presented, I mean, it would be great for Wyandotte. But I mean, the way it sounds like it's one of those projects that we, we vote on and plan on, but it never happens. So that's, that's all I got to say, thanks.
Sure. And there are, there are elements that are in the action plan that are, have, have already taken place and move forward. But it's going to be incremental. So there's, there's a lot of big ideas. There's, there's, you know, a whole network of trails that is, you know, we may be years and years away from, but certain, certain elements may be much more near term.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions? Okay, I think we're good. So what you're looking for for us are individual recommendations of the resolutions that take to the Board of Commissioners, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And Janet, you, you need separate ones for each one, correct?
That is correct, sir.
Okay, so at this time, I will entertain a motion to recommend approval of the resolution regarding the Northeast Kansas City, Kansas Heritage Trail Plan to the Board of Commissioners. Commissioner Jones?
I make a motion to approve the Northeast Kansas City, Kansas Heritage Trail Plan.
Thank you. Motion for approval on the Northeast Kansas City, Kansas Heritage Trail Plan recommendation of the Board of County Commissioners, the second Commissioner Polly?
It is.
Thank you. Any discussion on that recommendation? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Jones?
I.
Miller?
I.
Polly?
Hi.
Ward? Commissioner Ward?
I.
Beth?
I.
Conley?
I.
Ernst?
I.
Mr. Chairman, that motion passes, seven in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. Now I will look for a recommendation on the Merriam Connected Corridor Plan. Commissioner Jones?
Motion to approve the Merriam Connected Corridor Plan.
Thank you. Motion's been made to recommend approval to the Board of Commissioners, the Merriam Connected Corridor Plan. Is that a second, Commissioner Polly?
It is.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Jones?
I.
Miller?
I.
Polly?
Hi.
Ward?
I.
Beth?
I.
Conley?
I.
Ernst?
I.
Mr. Chairman, that motion passes, seven in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. And then finally, we need a motion to recommend approval on the GoDOT Countrywide Strategic Mobility Plan to the Board of Commissioners. Commissioner Jones? On the Go Dot Countrywide Strategic Mobility Plan to the Board of Commissioners, Commissioner Jones.
Last but not least, I make a motion to approve the Go Dot Countywide Strategic Mobility Plan.
A motion is for approval and recommendation of the Board of Commissioners on the Go Dot Countrywide Strategic Mobility Plan made by Commissioner Jones. Is that a second? Once again, Commissioner Polly.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call please.
Jones.
I.
Miller.
I.
Polly.
I.
Ward.
I.
Beth.
I.
Conley.
I.
Ernst.
I.
Mr. Chairman, that motion passes, seven in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. These will all be recommended to the Board of County Commissioners at their next meeting on August twenty-fifth at seven PM. Is that correct, Janet?
That is correct.
Right, thank you. Is there any other items of business that we need to discuss before adjournment?
Mr. Chairman, I do not have anything.
Okay, Mr., uh, excuse me, Commissioner Connolly, you have your hand up?
Uh, yes. I guess I'd like the list of all people that's on the board or can we go to the website and see it? Cause it's not like I'm, some people's moved or changed.
Are you talking about Board of County Commissioners?
Yeah, planning's only, no, I'm sorry.
Oh, ours, okay.
Our board, yeah.
Yes. In terms of the website not being updated?
No, I've just said, I don't know, I don't know some of the members. I mean, some, some people left or, and it's been some replacements.
Yes, our, our two, our two newest replacements are Commissioner Ward and Commissioner Beth. And they've been on for what, the last couple of months, couple, three months now, Janet? Is that correct?
Several months, yes.
Yeah, who did they replace? I guess that's the, that's the question that I'm asking.
Commissioner Cho and Commissioner, is it, was it Reasons?
Hughie.
Or was it Hughie?
Oh, Hughie, yes, Commissioner Hughie and Commissioner Cho.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Okay. Anything else?
No.
All right. Well, seeing nothing else, eight thirty-three, not a bad night. Commissioner Miller.
Are we not gonna sing happy birthday to Chairman Carson?
No, I have control of the mute button.
Sure, let me go ahead and turn the recording off first, though.